Welcome everyone, before we begin, we will have a prayer by Councilman Fitzwater, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, Father, thank you for this day, thank you for the opportunity to get together and do the business of our city, our community, and to watch over the beautiful communities that we serve around our community, and all the participants. Thank you to be with our public servants, public safety, military scattered in places around the world looking out for our opportunities to meet tonight and discuss issues, and thank you for their dedication to that service, for their families, and to be with all the families represented here tonight, who just watch over, and to all the individuals that come in.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to be public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, April 2nd, 2018 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson will now call the order and call the roll, please.
Fitzwater.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Here.
Item 3, is there a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 4, miscellaneous agenda items, we have several this evening, and that's what's so exciting about our city, is to see all these great things happening tonight, and to see a full City Hall. So we are just really thankful to have all of you here tonight. So we're going to start off. Item A is Ms. Olivia Henin from Little Box of Sunshine. If you'd like to come forward, welcome Olivia, and she's here to promote her walk, run, and roll 5K. Welcome, glad to have you here this evening.
Hi, as Mayor Turgeon said, my name is Olivia Henin. I'm in 10th grade at Hawaii's Catholic, and I am the president and founder of Little Box of Sunshine. On January 2nd, 2009, my friend Margaret Romf was injured in a car accident. She sustained many injuries and is now a 14-year-old quadriplegic on a ventilator. Early in the summer of 2016, I was inspired to start my own charity when Margaret was in the hospital for 67 days. I thought I could raise some money for a children's charity and call it a day. I had just graduated 8th grade at Immaculate Conception School in Jefferson City. How much good could a freshman in high school do, anyway? While visiting Margaret, I saw other children that did not have the loving and supportive family that Margaret has. Some children were dropped off and left alone for several days or even weeks until it was time for them to leave. Walking through the picku at Women's and Children's Hospital, I realized something, I needed to do something more than just raise some money, but I didn't know what. In June 2016, that something became Little Box of Sunshine. Little Box of Sunshine is a 501(c)(3) charity based here in Jefferson City. Our mission is to brighten the days of children in hospitals. We do this by sending them boxes full of yellow-themed goodies. A box from Little Box of Sunshine includes items like pillowcases, coloring books, crayons, stress balls, and other miscellaneous toys to keep kids entertained during their long hospital stays. Our first box delivery was made to St. Louis in the winter of 2016. That delivery fueled my fire even more. After that, it was clear that Little Box of Sunshine was here to stay. Since then, we have delivered a total of 640 boxes to seven hospitals in three states, including Cardinal Glennon Children's Hospital, Shriners Hospital for Children, St. Louis Children's Hospital, Children's Mercy Hospital in Kansas City, University of Missouri Williams and Children's Hospital, Helen Devos Children's Hospital in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and Riley Children's Hospital in Indianapolis, Indiana. Little Box of Sunshine holds many fundraisers and community outreach events throughout the year. Last year, we hosted our first 5K, took part in the 8th Annual Miracles for Margaret Benefit Golf Scramble, at which we awarded the first-ever Miracles for Margaret and Little Box of Sunshine Scholarship. Hosted our first Chick-fil-A fundraiser night, and the first St. Martin's School Girls Night, to name a few. We depend on these fundraisers and private donations for support. As much as I want sick children to know that I care, I really want them to know that they have an entire group of kids their age that are thinking about them and praying for them. Even though a normal kid might not know what it's like to be in the hospital for an extended period of time, most kids know what it's like to not feel well. I have tried to use this to encourage other people my age and younger to get involved. To reach out to more young people, we have added one high school and one grade school student to our Board of Directors. I am so proud of how these new additions have stepped up to the plate and given themselves wholeheartedly to the mission of Little Box of Sunshine. Although we can't do it all, these students and I are trying to take many of the activities and responsibilities of the charity into our own hands, rather than the hands of the adults on our board. This truly makes each Little Box of Sunshine to a kid from a kid. I have many goals for Little Box of Sunshine. The first and most important is to make kids smile and to know that they aren't alone, that someone is cheering for them and that someone cares. I also hope to show other children that aren't sick that they too can make a difference. I often tell kids that if they make one person smile, that is making a difference, and it does not take much to make someone smile. If they hold the door open for someone at the grocery store, that is making a difference. On April 28th, we are holding the 2nd Annual Little Box of Sunshine 5K Walk, Run, and Roll. The race will be held at 9:00 a.m. on the Jefferson City Greenway Trail. We will provide each race registrant with a dry-fit race shirt, and each finisher will be awarded a custom Little Box of Sunshine finisher's medal. The proceeds from this event will go towards purchasing items to put in boxes to deliver to states along the east coast this summer. I hope that through my hard work, I can also inspire other people to help. There is no such thing as too many volunteers or too much fundraising. There are always more kids suffering that we can make smile. Tonight, I brought a box for you to see and some 5K registrations. Feel free to take as many as you would like. If you would like to learn more about Little Box of Sunshine, you can visit our Facebook page or website, where a printable version of the 5K registration is also available. I prepared a short video of pictures from many of our events and deliveries, so you can see our mission come to life.
Thank you, Olivia, that's wonderful. So very proud of you for this program, and you really are a ray of sunshine in this organization that helps so many in bringing sunshine to the lives of those that are in the hospital in need at most. So how wonderful. So congratulations, and then April 28th, we will make sure that we help get the word out for your 5K. And if you'd like, you can come forward and we'll get a picture, and you can show us the box and what's in there. And if you have anyone else with you that you want to introduce or have come up with you this evening, you're welcome to. I do see your mom out there, hi, hello, and maybe some others from your group. Wonderful. So we will get Council up here, and we'll do a photo together. All right, we also have Addison and Carson here, and they are showing us what's in this box, crayons, and stuffed animal, and Play-Doh, and slinky, and all kinds of fun. I wouldn't mind getting into that a little bit, that would really keep these kids entertained and having fun in the hospital. So would you all like to say anything more? Well, keep up the good work, great job, and this is just fantastic. Oh, yes. Well, this is great, I hope you raise a lot of money to continue doing this for kids, so thank you for all your efforts, so appreciate it very much. Thank you, and the card too, so they even make little cards, so to go in each one, to brighten their day. Well, thank you so much. All right, that is very cool. And if you want to bring some up or pass them around, or Emily can get them to the Council, and feel free to pass them around among everybody who's here tonight for the meeting, so thank you. All right, and item B, we are going to recognize this evening Lincoln University Track Athlete, Siddiqui Edie. So Siddiqui, you're welcome to come forward. Congratulations Siddiqui. Siddiqui from Lincoln University was named Field Athlete of the Year. So if you'd like to go to the podium Siddiqui, and tell us a little bit about your experience and what that was like, and congratulations, we're very proud of you, so tell us a little about that.
Thanks for having me tonight. Pretty much, it was exciting knowing that it was my last indoors competing for Lincoln University. I've been here for three and a half years now, and I've won like three national titles, and two Field Athlete of the Year. So it's pretty good. I wanted to have more, to compete more for Lincoln, because it's a pretty good school. And my coach over there, Victor Thomas, he's a very good coach, and he taught me a lot since I've been here, and I just want to say thank you, and thanks to everyone.
Well, Jefferson City is very proud of you, that is quite an honor, and of course, you were on the front page of the sports section, so we have your article, but we also wanted to take a moment here and officially recognize you on behalf of the City of Jefferson, and how proud we are of our student athletes at Lincoln, and especially for you having the recognition for Field Athlete of the Year is quite an honor, so congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we also wanted to take a moment, we would like to get a picture as well, and so stay up here, we're not quite finished, but we did want to also say, I believe we have some of the women's athletes, the women's NCAA third in Division II Indoor Track and Field Champions, I believe are some of them here with us this evening as well, so if they would like to come up too, this is such a great night to recognize all of our Lincoln athletes, so if they would like to go to the podium and introduce yourself over here and tell us your names, and so, and then we'd love to get a picture with all of our athletes and coaches and everybody who's here, so welcome, we're glad to have you, and congratulations.
Okay, hello? Good night, everyone, my name is Diana Caldwell.
Good night, everyone, my name is Renee Medley.
Good night, everyone, my name is Renee Ambursley.
Well, congratulations to all of you for the women's NCAA to be third in Division II, and you're Indoor Track and Field Champions, so that's wonderful too, and we have Mr. Grant, Carlos, Councilman Grant would like to say a few words.
And I also want to note that the women placing third, and I believe they did that with only having, how many members on the, they only had three members, three members on the track team, and they placed third in the Division II National Titles with only three young ladies. That is outstanding, y'all.
That is outstanding. That is great. Well, that is fantastic, and we have some coaches in the room, if the coaches would like to come forward as well, and let's get a picture, if y'all want to come forward, we'll do a picture, and Council can come up here too.
I'd just like to give some more information on what these young ladies did. They're kind of shy, so I don't know. Renee with the E, she ran the 60 and the 200, she was second in the 60 meter and third in the 200. Diana Caldwell, she did the long and the triple, she was second in the triple and third in the long. And Renee with the A, she ran the 400 and she was second, she was runner-up in the 400 championship. And as you know, Siddiqui won the triple and was second in the long, next way around, won the long, second in the triple, so, and they were third overall, just barely missing the championship. So hopefully outdoor with some more athletes, you never know. Thank you very much. And we have Coach McCorvey alongside, and Coach Williams right here, all right.
All right, go Blue Tigers, very exciting, so congratulations to all of those athletes. Item C, we have a retiree recognition for Mr. Vince Schuster for 41 years of service, and he can't be here this evening, but Mr. Marash is going to do the recognition.
Yeah, thank you, just say a couple words maybe, is Vince a longtime employee, obviously 41 years, he started with the city as a utility worker, and he's held several different jobs, so it's a good example to our other employees, how there are opportunities at the city once you arrive, and I think he was a maintenance worker originally, became an operator, pumping system mechanic, and now a utility crew supervisor. So Vince has trained a lot of employees over the years, and we will miss him, but it's another example of us, you know, our population getting a little bit older, and we're losing these long-term employees, so we're doing the best we can to replace them.
Well, we appreciate the many years of service, and thank you for that recognition, and please pass on the Council's sincere congratulations as well. Thank you. Item D, we have the Festival of Faiths proclamation, and I believe this evening we may have Reverend Monte Edwards and Warren Solomon, are they here this evening? Oh, great, wonderful. Anyone else who might be here for the Festival of Faiths? So if you'd like to come forward to the podium and tell us a little bit about this festival event that's coming up in April, welcome. And also Mr. Frank Rysik.
We're excited about this. Forgive me, I have a cold, my voice is, hopefully you can hear me, microphone is fantastic. This is going to be an event that's going to take place on April 20th and April 30th. The primary, I'm sorry, 20th, April 20th and 21st, Frank, thanks Frank. The primary purpose of this is to help improve and increase deeper understandings of the different religions within Jefferson City and in central Missouri. It's going to begin on April 20th with a concert that's going to feature David Lamott, who appears all over the place, to sing songs, he's an author, he's a songwriter, he's a peace activist, I know he spent some time with Rotary International doing his singing with them as far as this was concerned. And then on April the 21st, we're going to have a special all-day program, where it'll begin with Paul Nitter, who is from, Professor Emeritus from Union Theological Seminary. He's Catholic, one of the books he wrote was "How Understanding Buddhism Made Him a Better Christian," just to give you a feeling for what that part will be like. Then we're going to break down into smaller groups, where people will be able to go to listen to people from different religions who are going to be there. Their primary focus will be to talk about, from what are the main ideas and practices of their specific religion, and what above all else would they hope people who do not belong to their religion would understand about their religion and about the people of their religion. Among the religions that'll be represented, we have Muslim, we have Hindu, we have Catholic, we have Buddhist, we have Jewish, and we have Protestant. So these will be the major groups that are there. The people who are coming to speak with us, a number of them come from out of town, one person from Denver, a couple people from St. Louis, these are very knowledgeable experts about their religions, and it should be very engaging, the small groups will give people plenty of chance to ask questions and clarify their thoughts. At the very end, we're going to have an opportunity for our people to share what have they done in the different cities related to interfaith cooperation to help make their city a better place, and then we'll, in small groups, we'll be talking about what can we in Jefferson City do, crossing religious lines, having interfaith activities to help make Jefferson City a better place. That's the key ideas. Anything to add?
I think it covered it.
Great, so this is open to the public, do they need to register to come to this?
Yeah, there is, and there'll be registration material posted in town, I didn't know how many people were going to be here, unfortunately, but First United Methodist Church, I know, will have plenty of materials for people to pick up, and then they'll, we'll be posting it, I think it's going to go on different websites for downtown business, they'll have something on their website, and different groups will have it on their website.
Great, all right, does Council have any questions, comments? Okay, well, we'll do, we did a proclamation for you to present that evening, so we'll do a picture with it, and that way, as you put this out on your website, you can promote with that.
Thank you very much.
All right, and item E, it is National Library Week proclamation that we are presenting to Mrs. Claudia Cook, welcome Claudia, oh, I'm sorry, Natalie.
Natalie.
Okay, welcome. Well, we are glad to have you both here this evening.
Yes, thank you for having us. So I'm Natalie, I do the marketing for the library, and this is Jeff, he's our board president. Claudia, our director couldn't be here, she had a family emergency. So National Library Week is next week, for those of you that may not know. Basically, it's a week to celebrate all things library-related. Initially, people are probably going to think that's all books, but we are so much more than books, we have so many more resources and things to do at the library. So some highlights for next week, on Tuesday is National Library Workers' Day, and so our Friends Group provides us with lunch, which is awesome, we get, the staff is very excited about that. And then on the 11th, we have National Bookmobile Day, and you can stop by and check out the bookmobile, get your picture taken, driving it, and the Secretary of State will be there to do a storytime at 1:15. So we're very excited about that, and then on Saturday is Patron Appreciation Day, so you can come for a free lunch. So all of the information's on our website, our Facebook page, that kind of stuff. And then tonight, when you're done with your meeting, if you're hungry, you can go to Buffalo Wild Wings, and our foundation is doing a fundraiser, so.
Wonderful.
Yep.
Well, that sounds great, so we will be celebrating, and I have officially proclaimed in the City of Jefferson, April 8th through the 14th, to be National Library Week, so we will help support those efforts, and we will look forward to all the exciting things that you have going on at the library next week, and appreciate you both being here.
Thank you.
Does Council have any questions? Okay, and we'll do a picture, so you can promote this as well.
Absolutely. Bank, Landmark Bank, React of Jefferson City, and the City of Jefferson. And also our judges, Mayor Turgeon, Bill Plank, and Joyce Sweeney.
Just before we present, I would like to let Sarah have a few seconds, just to say what it is, or talk about what we do, or her committee does.
Hello. So the Board of Realtors is, I think, pretty good about trying to get out in the community, not just as Realtors, but just to support our community in general. One of the things we do is poster contests like this. But we also do a quarterly fundraiser collection that we do every quarter. And this quarter, we are actually collecting for a little box of sunshine, so thought we'd throw that in there. So yeah, we do a different nonprofit every quarter, is one of the things that our Community Outreach Committee does. And so we'll be taking up collections for them at the Board of Realtors office on Bubba Lane through the end of April.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to do the presentation.
Wonderful, sure.
Plus the winners.
And I can say, as you're getting ready to announce the winners, being part of the selection process, one of the judges, that was a very difficult decision because there were such talent, so we're very proud of all the winners. They really did a fantastic job.
They did.
Fourth grade, third place winner, Claire Icoff.
Getting your steps in.
Fourth grade, second place winner, Peyton Stebinger.
Fourth grade, first place winner, Mathia Steinman-Bush. And I need to add that all the fourth grade winners were from the Cole R. One Russellville School.
Fifth grade, second place is Isabel Cruz with Cole R. One Russellville.
Fifth grade, first place is Kira Restemeyer with South Callaway.
Sixth grade, third place winner is Sierra Bradley with Thomas Jefferson.
Sixth grade, second place winner is Tremita Woodruff with Thomas Jefferson.
Fifth grade, second place winner is Sierra Bradley with Thomas Jefferson.
Fifth grade, first place winner, Mathia Steinman-Bush. And I need to add that all the fourth grade winners were from the Cole R. One Russellville School.
Fifth grade, second place is Isabel Cruz with Cole R. One Russellville.
Sixth grade, third place winner is Sierra Bradley with Thomas Jefferson.
Sixth grade, second place winner is Tremita Woodruff with Thomas Jefferson.
Congratulations, everyone. And I have the proclamation to officially declare Fair Housing Month in the city of Thank you again to the Jefferson City Area Board of Realtors, and all the students who participated, and their families for being here this evening, and friends, and teachers who worked so hard on this. It's such a wonderful theme, so we appreciate seeing all of the artwork there. So thank you again, and congratulations. All right. Now we have item H, which is Service Month proclamation. And we have, I believe Josh Ferguson is here, but Councilman Hussey will give us a little brief overview. And if Josh would like to come forward, or anyone else from, I think Josh is back there, Councilman Hussey will tell us a little bit about Service Week, Service Month.
Service Month. Thank you, Mayor. April's a great time for citizens that want to give back to the community to do so. They've got a couple of opportunities. The first is Serve Jeff City, now in our seventh year, seventh year, which will be Saturday, April 21st. Servefjeffcity.org is the place to go. And if that day doesn't work out, Mission JC, I think, is now in their fourth year, fifth year. And their activity is Sunday, April 29th. Both events are days of service for residents that want to, or anybody that wants to volunteer, select a project to volunteer at that day, whether it's yourself, your friends, your family, your coworkers. You can sign up in multiple ways. And if these two want to talk about some of the projects we have, I'm going to put them on the spot, coming up. JJ, if you want to talk about some of the parks projects? Josh, if you want to talk about anything, you're welcome to as well.
Yeah, with this particular event, there's quite a few opportunities park-related. You visit the website for more details on that. But like Ken was explaining, on Saturday, we'll get together at McClung, first thing, about 8 o'clock, disperse after a breakfast, and head out and serve the community that Saturday morning. And we're really hoping that weather cooperates. Last year, we had a rain out, more or less. We had some projects that were done later, but really hoping that we have good weather to support that day, so.
Josh, you have anything?
So how can people get involved in these projects? Do they just show up on those days?
Well, they can show up, but we'd like them to go to servjeffcity.org to sign up prior to, or go to missionjc.org to sign up for that event and register. There's T-shirts that you can get, you can see our great sponsors. Republic Services is our title sponsor of Serve Jeff City, so thank you to Republic Services. We've got some great organizations. And Serve Jeff City has been a partnership between the YMCA, Parks and Recreation, and the United Way. Mission JC has been a collection of churches here in the community that cancel their Sunday service for volunteers, church members to go out and serve in this way. So collectively, between the two days, I think we'll get north of 1,000 volunteers giving back those days. So anybody in the council that wants to come out, some of you have in the past, Larry's good to bring out a large group. Steve has certainly shown up to help out, and a lot of other faces have been there at past events. So pray for good weather, and come on out and serve those two days.
Well, thank you. And I know, Councilman Hussey, you've been instrumental in getting this started many years ago, and it's wonderful to see how it's grown into such a well-loved month of service, and all the projects that happen in Jefferson City. And we appreciate having you all here. So let's get a picture with the proclamation. I have officially declared this month as Service Month in the city of Jefferson. And Councilman Hussey can join me up here as well, and anybody else that would want to, and we'll do a picture.
Letter I, the next item, is the Missouri Rock Island Trail Award, which was presented to the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department. And this is on behalf of the Missouri Rock Island Trail Organization that held a meeting here in Jefferson City recently, and our own councilman, Rick Mahalovich, serves on their board. I believe you were just elected as a new board member. So tell us a little bit about what that service means.
Well, the Missouri Rock Island group has their annual meeting in Jefferson City annually, and use the park facilities for that. And Jeff City Parks has been a great supporter in terms of trails, and so they're recognizing that partnership. The group's single mission is to convert the old Rock Island, which is 144 miles of what is now an old rail corridor into a trail, that they believe, we believe that it would enhance the economic development in Missouri, and including all the recreation opportunities it has to offer. The plaque you're holding is a cross-section of one of the rails that had been salvaged. So that's a part of the presentation. So if you should have any more questions, you can go to our webpage.
Well, we were certainly honored to get this award, and I know that there were also, they recognized the city of Jefferson, Parks and Rec, and then also David Bangy, and there were some other staff, city staff members there, that everybody kind of collectively working together. So would we like to get a picture of this, Rick, and city staff, Parks, and anyone else who's involved? Congratulations again. All right. Item J, we have the announcement of the prison concert, Inside the Walls, on June 30th, 2018. So guess who's coming to our city?
Who's coming to our city? Well, they're coming to our city. Going to play their guitars and sing us a country song.
Keep singing, listen up. In Jeff City-mo. Well, they're coming to our city. Woo, yeah, Big and Rich is coming to our city. Okay, so we know the drill. So when I say "down by the river," the answer is "in Jeff City-mo." Let's try that one more time. So whenever you hear the mayor say "down by the river, in Jeff City-mo," woo, they're coming to our city. As you can see, Big and Rich is bringing the party with Cowboy Troy to the concert Inside the Walls at the historic Missouri State Penitentiary. It's our third annual concert Inside the Walls on Saturday night, June 30th, which is going to kick off the celebration for Salute to America. So we hope that you all join us there. If you want to see that performance again, or something better, then you can come to the prison and see that. So I did see a cowboy hat over here. Good job, councilman. All right. And yes, councilman.
Also, our very own Murphy's Ford will be part of the lineup.
Yes, they will. We're very proud of our local boys from Murphy's Ford, and they have really, they've really hit it big with their album. And they're going to be performing live and opening up for Big and Rich. So that is pretty big for our city. So, all right, so we'll all be there. Tickets are on sale now. So go to salutetomerica.com. Item seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. None on the agenda this evening. Now we go to announcements, as if that wasn't announcement enough for all of you for tonight. Any council committee announcements this evening? Councilman Hussey?
I would just announce that the Charter Review Advisory Committee has its first meeting tomorrow evening, 7:00 PM, council chambers. Those are certainly public meetings, so if anybody from the public or the council would like to attend, you are welcome to do so.
Wonderful. Any other council committee announcements?
Thomas Jefferson, 276th birthday, April the 13th, which is when essays are due and multimedia presentations are due. And on April the 30th, there'll be a birthday celebration of Thomas Jefferson, an actor, and he'll read the essays and do multimedia presentations, which will need several people involved.
That sounds good. Come on over, Rick, and we'll do a selfie with Thomas Jefferson. With the real Thomas Jefferson. I don't know which one's the real. You're not quite that old, 200 and how old? Okay.
Just one.
Good job. All right. So we will have a birthday party. And my announcements, I'm just going to say, everybody vote tomorrow's election day. So polls open 6:00 AM, open until 7:00 PM, so everybody please vote. We do have a fifth ward race. We're going to really miss Councilman Larry Henry. Can't believe we're winding down here, but there is an election tomorrow, so everybody please vote. And even if you're not in the fifth ward, you will have a school board race, and also we have a city amendment to the city charter on there as well. So everybody vote tomorrow. We have, Mr. Sanders has an announcement.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I have four. They keep increasing for some reason. On Saturday, April 21st, the Cemetery Resources Board, along with the Historic City of Jefferson, is hosting a walking tour at the Woodland Old City Cemetery. It's quite intriguing. There will be volunteers there, or docents, if you will, by the gravesites of prominent citizens, be able to sort of share a part of their life there. It's, come as you may, come what time you might care to, with all the other activities going on that Saturday. I'd like to welcome everybody to attend that activity. If it does rain on Saturday between 10:00 and 1:00, the rain date is the following Sunday. The second, let's see, I don't even know if my PowerPoint is up. There we go. The residential hazardous household waste drop-off. We have several upcoming dates. The next one will be April 11th by appointment only, so please call 634-6410 to schedule a time to drop off your materials or at any other future date. On our website is this flyer that you see here that will outline what is permissible and what is not permissible at the drop-off. The third item is semi-related. It is the big bulky pickup item time of the year. West of Highway 54 will be in two weeks, Monday, April 16th, and east of Highway 54 will be April 23rd. Likewise, we have a website that explains what you can leave out by the curb and what you should not leave out by the curb, and that's available to all the citizens of Jefferson and residential properties. The fourth one is in honor of the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. The city of Jefferson, the Jefferson City Area Board of Realtors, the Missouri Commission on Human Rights, and River City Habitat for Humanity, they're hosting a fair housing conference to promote community outreach, awareness of fair housing laws, fair housing issues, and case studies. That is April 16th, 3:00 to 6:30 PM, at the Hawthorne Community Room at 3600 Amazonas Drive here in Jefferson City, and we'll probably post that on our website, too. So just like to make everybody aware of those activities.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any other council announcements this evening? We'll move to item nine, our Lincoln University Student Representative update, Mrs. Carolyn Wanjaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few things that are coming up. Well, first and foremost, Lincoln University announced its 20th president, and she'll be resuming office on June 1st. There's a press conference on Friday, the 6th, with the new president. And Lincoln University football team is having a spring game on April the 14th at 2:00 PM. And there is also Spring Fest starting on the 14th to the 21st, and I would like for you all to come and support the Blue Tigers. That'll be all.
Thank you, Ms. Wanjaro. We will be sure to support the Blue Tigers. And then also this weekend, some of us will be attending the Lincoln University Gala. So we are looking forward to that on Saturday evening, and I believe you can still get tickets. Councilman Graham, are they still available?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so we'll look forward to celebrating that event as well. Item 10, presentations from the gallery. We have none signed up this evening. Item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced 2017-126.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning .92 acres of land addressed as 994 Diamond Ridge from CO Office Commercial to C1 Neighborhood Commercial.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is a rezoning from a commercial office to a commercial neighborhood, commercial zoning. You can see here on the map, Edgewood is down on the bottom part of the map, and you see Diamond Ridge going up to the north. The subject property is in that hatched color there. I'd also like to point out that both to the east and the west of the property, the zoning is C1, and to the south, it is C2, and residential RS2 to the north. The zoom-in of the property kind of indicates, or it doesn't really show it, but the northern part of the parking lot's up higher and the southern's down to the lower section. The applicant, the property owner, has a business lined up to take, start business in the lower part, is a salon daycare-type business. There'd be no additional traffic, no additional burden in the area. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we had one person, one citizen, talk in favor of it and none opposed to it. It does, it meets approval of the Public Works Department in terms of any sort of infrastructure. The staff recommendation was to approve, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also unanimously is making the recommendation to approve this zoning change. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. And I forgot, there is a public hearing on this in two weeks. We've advertised for it, and we're doing all the proper public notice.
Great, any questions? Thank you. 2017-127.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Cliffside Estates, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a small parcel, just up off of Boonville Road, sort of at the end of Bel Air. It is a, currently one parcel, very long, skinny parcel. There's a house in the middle of the parcel, and the property owner would like to split a parcel off of each side, so the subdivision would actually have three parcels in it. Let me zoom in a little bit more, you might be able to see it. So you can see it's a precarious lot to develop on. The property owner would like to split it so that they may sell off the lot on either side of it. There is no zoning changes. The Public Works Department has, as their recommendation, approved the infrastructure plan that would accompany this subdivision, and there are no opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and the Planning and Zoning Commission was recommending approval with an eight-to-zero vote in favor of it. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. 2017-128.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a $66,970 agreement with Jefferies Electrical Services Incorporated for the stationary generator for 2320 Hyde Park Road project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, a construction contract with Jefferies Electric. This is basically to install a generator at our wastewater facility at Hyde Park. We, as you know, we probably have two facilities out there, the streets and wastewater facilities. One item our staff's been working on over the last year is looking at our emergency preparedness, and this is one aspect of that, to make sure we can stay in business when the power goes out.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, 2017-129.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, designating 130 East High Street as a local historic landmark.
Mr. Sanders?
Ms. Abbott will be taking care of the next three items.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so I'm going to be addressing items 129, 130, and 131 through this presentation. Each year, the Historic Preservation Commission takes applications from property owners for designation of their building as a landmark. The Historic Preservation Commission this year received three applications and have voted for these three properties that I'm going to present on for consideration as a landmark designation. Pursuant to Section 842 of the city code, the property is eligible for landmark designation if the Historic Preservation Commission determines that it meets any of the following criteria. Criteria A, the potential landmark is an identifiable neighborhood or distinct geographic area that has, which has historic or and/or cultural importance to the city. Criterion B is the potential landmark is associated with a particular prominent person, a significant event, or historical period. Or Criterion C, the potential landmark exhibits a particular architectural style or school or are associated with a particular architect, engineer, builder, designer, or craftsman. Or Criterion D, the potential landmark contains historic, prehistoric, or archaeological features, evidence, and/or artifacts which have the potential to contribute to the understanding of historic and prehistoric cultures. As I mentioned, this year, the Historic Preservation Commission has awarded for three, and all three properties, if awarded as a landmark, will be presented at the Heritage Week Celebration, which will be held here on Tuesday, May 15th, in this council chambers. So the first one is Bill Number 2017-129. That is for the property at 130 East High Street, which is known as the Brandon Burger Drug Store. The property is located within the Missouri State Capitol Historic District and constructed prior to 19, excuse me, 1885. It was acquired by Adolf Brandon Burger in 1881 as a drugstore and continued to operate as a drugstore into the late 1950s, and improvements have been made to the building. The historic, the property does meet the criterion A and B as outlined in Section 8-42. Next, I'm covering 2017-130 for 720 East High Street. The property, excuse me. The property, or the land was originally bought and sold by James Bowlin, who served in Congress and a member of the Missouri House of Representatives. The house was built prior to 1869, likely by Dietrich Ostermann, and sold around 1908 to Reverend Joseph Sillinger, rector of the St. Peter Catholic Church. And the house was restored to original brick and with tuck pointing painstakingly redone, and the inside preserved as much as possible to include floors and transom. This property meets criterion letter. Criterion A. And then the final property is Bill Number 2017-131, is of 1213 Elmarine Avenue, which is known as the Dalton House. The property is known as the Dalton House because it was, has the history of the Missouri Governor Dalton's family hosting numerous events at this location. The house was also occupied by John Caskey Collett, a former Missouri Supreme Court judge and United States federal judge, and is also part of the Moral Drive National Register Historic District. So this property would meet criterion A and B as outlined in Section 8-42 of the code. I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of these three properties that are up for designation as a landmark for 2018.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. And full disclosure, on the first item, the 130 East High, which is Coffee Zone, that is owned by my dad, so, but I want to say I had nothing to do with the selection. I did not have any, anything to do with that, but very much appreciated, it's very proud of these historic landmark award winners. And we will read Bill 130 and 131, but first is, are there any questions for Mrs. Abbott? And you said the date is Tuesday, May 15th is the event?
That is correct.
In City Hall, council chambers?
Yes, at 4:00 PM in this room.
All right, and Mrs. Donalds, yes. Thank you, Mrs. Councilwoman Wiseman.
Do you know if any of the property owners are planning on showing up at the next meeting for these awards?
They were notified of the meetings, and in addition, we do present them with the plaque that you see up on the screen, which I may add, the city has a stockpile of those plaques, and it costs approximately $200 if you were to put an estimate to the cost of this nomination.
So what Councilwoman Wiseman said, do they need to be at the next meeting as well, or just the May 15th?
They have been notified to attend both meetings if they wish, yes.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, so we will have reading of 2017-130 and 131.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, designating 720 East High Street as a local historic landmark. 2017-131, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, designating 1213 Elmarine Avenue as a local historic landmark.
Any further questions on any of those bills? Okay, thank you. 2017-132.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Musselman and Hall Contractors LLC in the amount of $148,571.16 for the 2018 Fog Seal Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is a Fog Seal project, a construction contract with Musselman and Hall, a little less than $150,000 contract. It's kind of a tandem project to our overlay project where basically the goal of this project is to extend the life of our streets that were previously overlaid with the seal coat. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Marash? Okay. Item 13, bills pending, 2017-120.
An ordinance amending Chapter 8 Building Regulations, Article 7 Landlord Registration, and Article 8 Abandoned Buildings of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's two articles in Chapter 8 that we are desiring to seek changes on. The first one is the landlord registration. A little bit of background, there's approximately 7,000 rental units in Jefferson City. We've had this program since 2012. Approximately a third of the rental units are registered, leaving two-thirds not registered, which presents a problem in case people have to get a hold of the property owner in case of an emergency, other safety issue. Of those registered, several of them are incomplete. They're out of date. It's been six years since they may have registered, so the information, the property may have sold, so once again, emergency service people and also our staff have difficulty getting hold of the property owner in case of the situation we need to address. In updating the landlord registration, we expect a few outcomes. One is facilitating the property owners and tenants, educating them regarding their rights and responsibilities. Once again, contact the property owner in case of an emergency. We quite often get calls from other departments asking, who owns his property? We need to get a hold of them for a particular reason. And of course, help out with developing better rental housing stock that's safer and better and healthier for renters in the community. Some more...
project is to extend the life of our streets that were previously overlaid with the seal coat. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Marash? Okay. Item 13, Bills Pending, 2017-120.
An ordinance amending Chapter 8 Building Regulations, Article 7 Landlord Registration, and Article 8 Abandoned Buildings of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's two articles in Chapter 8 that we are desiring to seek changes on. The first one is the landlord registration. A little bit of background, there's approximately 7,000 rental units in Jefferson City. We've had this program since 2012. Approximately a third of the rental units are registered, leaving two-thirds not registered, which presents a problem in case people have to get ahold of the property owner in case of an emergency, other safety issue. Of those registered, several of them are incomplete. They're out of date. It's been six years since they may have registered, so the information, the property may have sold, so once again, emergency service people and also our staff have difficulty getting hold of the property owner in case of the situation we need to address. In updating the landlord registration, we expect a few outcomes. One is facilitating the property owners and tenants, educating them regarding their rights and responsibilities. Once again, contact the property owner in case of an emergency. We quite often get calls from other departments asking who owns his property, we need to get ahold of him for a particular reason. And of course, help out with developing better rental housing stock that's safer and better and healthier for renters in the community. Some more background of why we're seeking to do this is 42% of the dwellings in Jefferson City are rental properties, but more than 53% of the nuisance violations come from them. So we spend a lot of time already on rental property, and trying to find the owner sometimes is difficult. To give you an example, when we abate properties in 2017, we abated about 227 of them. 122 of those properties were rental properties. Another 90 of those properties were vacant or abandoned buildings. And so our abatements really have a minor impact on the owner occupied properties. There are the abandoned buildings and also the rental properties. So we're spending a lot of time and energy on these properties. The changes, this is sort of a chart that kind of goes through what the changes are and what the current code has in there. Currently, I mentioned there's a one-time registration. We would insist on a annual registration process. There's no fee to register now. There will be no fee to register in the future. We recommend increasing the distance of a local agent to be within 50 miles of the city instead of 20. That way, we'd be able to get property owners to be compliant that live up in Columbia or down at the Lake of the Ozarks. We would still request that we're notified or the registration update changes within 30 days of a property transfer, so we do know who the current property owner is. Making a minor clarification in terms of who would notify the owner of a penalty, and that would go from the city prosecutor to the city administrator. If they failure, if they fail to register, we've never really enforced that section of the code. We imagine that would be in conjunction to some other violation with that property. And we're also asking for more detailed contact information specifically for corporations. It's hard to identify who the actual person is to get a contact, so in case of emergency, we may only have the registered agent, which may be an attorney, which may be asleep at the time we're trying to contact him. Excuse me. So the three specific sections inside this article that we're really looking to change is the annual update of the registration information, the additional information required as part of the registration, and the minor change from the city prosecutor to the city administrator for the notification of a violation. Regarding, I can answer any questions now regarding the landlord registration, or I can continue with the abandoned building registration. It would be...
Any questions at this time? Okay, we'll continue.
Thank you. The abandoned building registration process is also existing since 2012. As of a month and a half ago, we had 118 registered properties. 26 of those were voluntarily registered, 92 of them were administratively registered. And then also, what we're planning on doing here, similar to what we're doing with the landlord registration, is we're better defining what an abandoned structure is. Perhaps it's owned by a public entity or a nonprofit, not just an individual. We're asking for more information about who the actual owner is behind this limited liability company. For example, who is the actual property manager? Who can we contact? And then also, the, we're suggesting to improve the actual registration process. There is also a notification and appeal process. We plan to go online using our new software. Actually, we can go online and have this all done, either electronically or still by paper for the convenience of the property owner. Some of the major changes have to do with the fees, and the fees are changed because this is based on a state statute that's been adopted by other communities and has been proven to be enforceable. So we're going from a one-time administration fee to no one-time administration fee, and basically go on a six-month billing cycle, semi-annual of $200 for every six months as opposed to $40 a month. That would also ease some of the burden on the finance department in terms of keeping track of that. A penalty fee would go from $17 a month to $25 a month, and the bill outlines the actual accrual of the fee, billing procedures, what happens if you fail to pay, the collection process of delinquent fees, which would allow us to put a lien on the property, keep the property owner from obtaining any permits, and also to be able to eventually, if the city chose to foreclose on the house itself, could do so. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, or my staff would be glad to help me answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or council deliberation on the bill? Okay. Thank you to you and your staff for the work on this. All right. So roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-121.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 of the Code of the City of Jefferson by modifying the parking time of three spaces in the 100 block of West High Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would modify three parking spaces on High Street from the, currently signed as post office parking, 15 minutes. Didn't modify them to be similar to a large portion of downtown, 90 minutes. And on the screen, they're highlighted with the black box. Sonny can point to it for me if you'd like.
I don't know if I can do that.
I don't know. See how this works. Got to hold this down, don't you? There we go. They're right up here. I got to keep reaching. Right there. So those are the three spaces we're talking about. There's, there were 16 total spaces, and this will bring, for the post office parking, this will bring it down to 13. The item was discussed at a couple different meetings of the Transportation Traffic Commission. They did elect to hold it over one meeting so they could notify the post office and other interested parties could come and talk to them about it. And after those two meetings, they did recommend approval to the council to modify the spaces.
Thank you. Any questions, deliberation? Councilman Graham?
Matt, did the post office ever get back with you in regards to any concerns or no concerns or anything like that?
Yeah, we did not hear from the post office.
What effect do you see those three parking spots having on the post office? I think there's like over 600 mailboxes that's located inside of that post office, and do you think that that's actually enough parking spaces for those individuals to have to park and go inside and get passports, to go inside and get, check their mail with the capital being in the disarray in which it is with the parking?
Well, that, I mean, that's the purpose of the commission meeting, is allow the residents and people who frequent the post office. I don't personally frequent it a lot, but that was the purpose, to notify the property owner, the post office in this case. And they seemed most concerned, as in my regulation, when we dealt with them in the past, is really the spaces on their side of the street, less so with the opposite side, is all I can say. And that, again, purpose of the TNT, Transportation Traffic Commission, let people come and discuss that with them. It's made up of a citizen board that looks at these issues, and like I said, I think it was publicized in the paper that they were discussing it, and they really didn't receive much feedback.
Thank you.
Any other questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Nay.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
No.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right. Bill passes. 2017-122.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2017-2018 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by changing the personnel schedule within the Department of Public Works.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This change would occur in the Wastewater Collections Division of Public Works, and basically relates to that division taking over the locate of utilities from a private company. We, at one time, we hired a company to do this, so when you would call Dig Right, a ticket would be issued. They would go out and mark the wastewater utilities, and we paid per, per call. That service, over time, we didn't feel we were getting adequate representation, you know, that can lead to people digging into our utilities, things of that nature. So we thought, well, we do, and other divisions do this internally at the city, so we took that service over, and it ended up, I believe, a good result from that. We actually saved some money in our budget doing this. So this would kind of straighten out those positions and create another crew leader to do this work.
Any questions? Council deliberations? All right. Thank you, Mr. Marash. Roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-123.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry to participate in cooperative purchasing pursuant to Section 26A-65 of the city code for parks' equipment, fixtures, and infrastructure components.
Mr. Gates?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry wishes to utilize cooperative purchasing through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance for the replacement, installation, or maintenance of park equipment for a period of two years. This ordinance shall not extend to purchasing of park equipment that were not bid through a competitive process or for professional services, including engineering, architecture, planning, construction management, or similar professional services. Also, if it adopted, the bill will not change purchasing limits for the Parks Director or for any staff member.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Councilman Mahalovich?
I'd just like our council to reiterate those last points since we, some of us got questions.
Thank you, Councilman Mahalovich. Cooperative purchasing is allowed by the Missouri state statutes, and essentially, it lets governmental entities piggyback on the coattails of other governmental entities that have used the bidding process to procure the lowest and best bid for a project. That's, all this is allowing, because our city code requires this body to authorize entities like the Parks Commission to use cooperative purchasing. It's not changing any of our other purchasing rules and policies, other than we do not need to go out and submit bids for these specific pieces of infrastructure or equipment through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance.
Thank you, Mr. Wilford. Any further questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 14, nothing on the informal calendar. Item 15, no resolutions. 16, we have no one signed up for Presentations from the Gallery on Other Topics. Item 17, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item 18, any new business? Item 19, approval of closed session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 20, unfinished business. I did forget to say during my announcements that the USS Jefferson City submarine crew, when they were here, they gave us the banner that's on display out in the hallway. It's a really neat banner. It's above the display case that has our USS Jefferson City memorabilia in it, so we took some pictures to send to them to show the banner on display in City Hall. We also have a few pictures we've circulated up here from their visit. I think they made it around the room over here, and we also sent them pictures. We are in the process of mailing those over from their visit here, so wanted to just draw your attention to our new banner out there. So any other unfinished business? Other than, "We woke up by the river in Jeff City Mo." All right. I'm waiting for someone to give me a quarter. No quarters?
[laughing]
Oh, yeah. I want the Mahalodollas. Give me that. Give me the Mahalodollas here. All right. Anything further? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Have a great meet, great evening.[1774.51][1774.51][music]